I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on January the 5th, 2012 at 6:00 PM is now called to order. Members present, Thomas Clark, Charles McCann, President, Thomas Ramy, Jr., Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, we need to appoint the President of the Lincoln County Commission for the calendar year 2012.
I would like to make a statement before I offer a motion on the table. I think that this county, this district, and this state is lucky at this point to have a governor such as Earl Ray Tomlin. We have grown to know him. He's taken care of this district. He's someone that we can be very proud of. And in the past, I've had some people and some groups bring up the idea of term limits for Presidents of the Commission that would also fall into place. I believe you would do that with term limits for the President of the Senate, which Earl Ray Tomlin was, the longest-serving President of the Senate. And if someone is serving ethically, morally, and doing everything they can to bring about positive change for the people they represent, I do not think that term limits should be imposed. And at this point, I would offer a motion to reappoint Commission President McCann to another four-year term.
Four-year term?
I'm one-year term.
(laughing)
And I just would like to say that if we had carried out the philosophy at the state level that some people have mentioned in the past that we should have term limits, we would not have Earl Ray Tomlin as Governor right now. And I think we should think about that.
Mr. Ramy is eloquent in his speaking, and whether it's good or bad, I do appreciate his confidence in him. But it is awkward to sit here and have to second the motion. I think, well, if I nominated him, he'd have to second the motion. So I guess it's all right. I'll second that motion. Now, being all yes vote, motion carries. And with that, I will certainly continue to do whatever I can, which sometimes is not much. Some days I have better days than others. But I do love Lincoln County. I just like doing what I'm doing. I hope that the people in the audience, the people of the county would be able to advise me and help me do things better. Because we all know that every day we can do things better. Sometimes it's doing differently. Sometimes not doing anything helps. You know, if you do too much, sometimes in the wrong way, it could be bad. But I think it's important that people be able to sit down and work together and get things done, have a common purpose. And I think that Commissioner Ramy has proven to me that he cares a great deal about Lincoln County, and he's certainly got skills and ability. And I enjoy working with him, seeing things accomplished and done. So moving right along.
Okay. Next thing is approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on December the 15th, 2011 at 6:00. It's 10 a.m. [inaudible].
So moved.
Second, being all yes vote, motion carries.
Next thing, we need to set the meeting date and time for the calendar year 2012.
And unless there's some reason to someone would think we need to change it, I would recommend that we just leave a meeting at 6 o'clock on the first Thursday and on the third Thursday at 10 a.m. It seems to work. It gives people, the courthouse changes monthly, and the working people change the cut. So with that, I'd entertain a motion. So moved.
Second, being all yes vote, motion carries.
The next thing on the agenda, we have, Ron's already went back upstairs. We have a couple attorneys here over a case that we want to go ahead and bring up forward. I've got it under "old business," and I don't even see Loretta Asbury here, so it would be the next thing. It's a hearing on the estate of Sue Ed Evans. It's a contest of the will. We have Joe Stevens present here. He has filed a motion to dismiss-
He wasn't supposed to have first looked at Ron. He said to get- first, did he talk-
Ron doesn't represent a party. Ron would be a witness.
Yes.
Does he need to be here?
Joe Stevens, C. Joseph Stevens is representing Robin Ann Simkins. We do have Lori Evans, the petitioner or the contestant for the contest of the will. The petition that Lori filed, and she took it upon the advisement of the county clerk, Ms. South, and we did not, she did not state the reason that she was contesting the will. Joe, would you like to state something?
Your Honor, so I have spoken. Actually, I served a copy of the motion to dismiss the contest of the will on Lori, who's known to me. But I provided the Commission with copies of the motion as well as the statute that applies to filing of a will contest, which is 4155. And that section of the code requires that a notice of contest must state concisely the grounds upon which the will is contested. And I reviewed the file and saw all the apparent attempt to contest the will that was filed that did not set forth the grounds. So my motion, though it is for dismissal of that contest, I would not oppose rescheduling this matter after Lori Evans has amended her contest specifically and concisely setting forth the reasons that she believes the Commission should not accept the will for probate. And actually, she and I formally discussed that, and she's here to speak about that. But I don't, I think she agrees that we can approach it that way, which would be satisfactory to me.
So just-
So what I would move is that the matter be passed at this time, and that, say, within 10 days, that Lori Evans file an amended contest that specifically sets forth the grounds that she believes that the will is invalid and should be set aside.
So you think it would be proper to motion to just set it aside at this time, or to cancel the hearing, or just set it aside for a 10-day period?
Yes, until she can file an amendment to her will contest that specifically says the grounds upon which she is trying to prove that the will is not valid.
Okay. Heard the recommendation, Attorney Stevens, in her motion to set this aside until we further hear some petition.
Yes, so moved.
Second. Oh, yes. He said aside until further notice.
The Commission might inquire of Ms. Evans what our position is.
Would you like to speak to the issue?
No, it's fine for us.
I saw you nod your head, so I took that as-
It's fine. I agree.
Anything else on this issue?
No, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. You're welcome to stay.
Okay. Ms. Asbury has came in. We had jumped over because she wasn't here. Now we will go ahead and let Ms. Asbury approach the County Commission.
You want to come up here where you can speak, address the issues?
Yeah.
Just you said, yeah.
She did call the security.
They earn every penny we pay them.
Ms. Asbury, would you like to speak to the Commission? What your petition is, you have sent a letter over here to the County Commission?
Yes. One of these, I'm wanting to file a motion to dismiss my sister Rebecca as executor of Dad's estate. And the reason being that the estate has not been closed. The family has not got any final accounting. We need closure. And like that, there's still money due from the veterans that we've not got, or don't even know if she's tried to get it. And that's the reason I'm doing this.
Well, Rebecca has filed her final settlement, and the County Commission has approved that, and the estate is closed with this ruling.
Well, no one in the family has received anything. And we had a hearing with Joe, and we discussed it, and we tried to get her to let me take over the veterans, because I had worked four years for my father. And to my understanding, he was still due more money. I don't know how much at this time, but he did not get everything he was due. I know for a fact that he is due $600 for the burial expense, which he should have gotten that at least 90 days after he died. And we don't know if he's even, she's even got that. And you cannot close an estate if there's still money coming into it.
She presented a letter to the county clerk's office from the veterans stating that all money had been paid, because that was one of your concerns, and from the Veterans' Administration that all money had been paid to the estate, and there would be no more money paid to the estate, other than the $600.
We didn't-
Now, there was something stating that there would be-
She didn't have anything when we had her meeting. She had absolutely nothing.
When did she file her last week? I don't have her file in here in front of me. But she did call my office and leave a message. She wanted me to return her call, and I was not able to get in touch with her to that. Now, as of probably two weeks ago, she hadn't filed anything.
And she didn't file it correctly either. According to Mr. Stevens, when we had her hearing, he suggested what form she needed to get to complete it, to make sure that everyone in the family got a copy of it. And she did not do it.
Who can get that information for us? Judy, I know you're going to be off duty.
If you give me just two minutes, I'll run to Donald's office. If you want to have his key and get it.
Okay.
Just to your office.
Just to find out what the information is, and then we'll go to the other side.
Right.
Now, I talked to Donald's secretary, and she told me nothing. Who had been filed since July?
Okay. Just send this out. That could be true.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just your security guard.
I mean, the family wants closure. And we need to be kept, you know, know what's going on during this time, but we've not been able to. It's just not right.
We, when we get these, you know, commission, we try to, you know, brief us on it. We tell Judy and whoever, let us know what's going on, what's latest. And that's what I was told, basically. Judy said that it had been enclosed, and only outstanding thing was the veterans issue.
It wasn't closed properly, according to Joe.
And that could be a matter of opinion, too.
Well, there's a certain form that you have to have to close an estate, and that was not done.
Right. And that could be, could be true.
Yeah. Can you state that, Mr. Stevens?
Yes. How's Mr. Johnson?
He's finally dragged now.
We appreciate that.
You're going to get some black trash.
Rick McDowell.
Don't get me talking. Anything's wrong.
It's all in the drains.
Green garbage.
I'm dealing with it. That green.
Color is.
Color money.
It's color value.
I think you're wrong. I think the letter, and I'm talking about, was the one she wrote to the County Commission, so I do.
I think we have a meeting in October, maybe. And I really give her plenty of time to do what she was supposed to do before I did anything, because this is not something that the family wanted. But there's no other choice. We want the estate closed in the honor that it deserves.
There is an accounting, and I took that to be final settlement.
But it's not the-
No, it's an accounting-
Yes.
-that she has filed in reference. If she had had it on the right form, as you stated earlier, that would have been a final settlement.
But she don't.
But it is an accounting, what was paid to each sibling.
She didn't put it on the-
No, she did not put it on the correct form. It's got the amount that she was taking, the amount that was paid out, and the amount that was distributed, which is what is on a final settlement. Was that one done in July? September the 26th, where it says-
23rd quarter.
Yeah. September 26th is when it was given to the office. And we didn't receive Joe's answer, his fiduciary, report of his fiduciary condition until this week, which was November the 1st. Thought you got it last week when I talked to you. Well, for this meeting. Yeah. I didn't get it prior to this, for another meeting for us to accept. And there is a letter here from the veterans dated February the 24th, 2011.
She didn't have anything like that at the meeting.
And then the letter, she has a letter here that we received on September the 2nd. And have you received a copy of that?
No. The family has got absolutely nothing.
This was addressed to the County Commission in reference to the veterans.
You have received the court-
Anything that we got, it was, we came to the courthouse and got copies.
She did get checks.
Yes.
That's what she says she got. So I wrote down three things. Wasn't put on the proper form for final closure. So it wasn't still open, in your opinion, and the veterans' money issue. Is there something else? Anything else?
Well, a lot of the family was upset with the 5% that she took. I don't know if there's anything can be done about that. Everyone says it's legal. But I've also been told it can be voted on. It could be any certain amount. The rest of the family helped pay for Dad's care except Rebecca. And we didn't feel like it was fair that she took what she did. She's not done a good job of hailing the estate, and so the family is very upset about it.
The letter from the Veterans Association, does that clear up the concern that she asked?
Here is a letter from her to the Commission addressing the veterans' issues.
And if, what would be the next step if she was removed? What would be, if the, not maybe your desire, but what would be the family, the rest of the family, what would, they want to happen? Who would take over?
They would want me to represent the family.
Do we have it in writing?
Yes, we can get it in writing.
Do we have it in writing?
Do I have it in writing? No, I do not. But it can be done. They want me to pursue the veterans, because Dad had told me when I was working on his veterans, he was supposed to got $35,000, nearly got $60,000. He told me he got it. I didn't know that he didn't until after his death. I was the only one that he would let for with the veterans. He would not let any of the rest of them do it. And I feel that he would want me to continue. And if he had something that was due him, he would want his children to have it. And his will plainly states he wanted his children to share and share alike.
Yes.
And that's the way it was supposed to be done.
So the only information you have that says there's money in the veterans based upon conversation between you and your dad, what you thought was due?
No. I've talked to, I've worked with different people. I have different ones helping me, not so much as just the veterans, but the disabled, able veterans was helping me. They was the one that quoted me the $35,000. And like I said, I didn't ask Daddy about it. He said he got it, and I assumed he got what he's supposed to. I do know for a fact that he is due the $600 and should have gotten that a long time ago. Now, if Rebecca's got that for his burial expenses, nobody in the family knows if she did or not. There's an application that you have to send in for that, so we don't know if she sent it in or not.
Well, I looked through this list. I didn't see it on the, always on the wrong form, but still pretty detailed computerized list of expenditures. And I didn't see a $600 or received or-
We don't even know if she applied for it. And he was a World War II veteran. He deserves it.
Any veteran does.
Exactly. Exactly.
There's something, I saw somewhere where he'd received, what, $16,000, wasn't it?
Yes.
It's in the letter, this letter.
But there's no 35 or no 600.
No.
And he may not get anything, but my opinion, it is worth a try. It needs to be, you need to see why he didn't get the rest. It needs to be in writing why he didn't receive what he was due.
And I hear you. I think it, you know, it seems to me like there's a couple, three issues, of course.
Well, that was one of the main issues. And only that, the family was very upset over her taking as much as she did, because no one else would have took anything.
Well, and it seemed to me like it, that's the point I was going to get to, is if she has already paid the 5%, then it seems to me that the Commission should order her to file whatever paperwork, whatever requests need to be filed to seek this additional money from the veterans. And if she can't or not willing to do that, then that would give us reason to look deeper into the issue. I think my first thoughts are, well, she's been paid, and she's taken this responsibility. She is the administress of the estate. That there's an issue that's been brought to our attention, and we need her to respond to us either in writing or in a hearing, status of that, but it's not. I just think it, rather than doing it without asking her, having been able to have an opportunity to tell us about it, I just think that's not the way to do it. Give her a chance to do what she's been paid to do.
Well, she really shouldn't have took the money, her 5% before the estate was closed. Legally, she's not supposed to.
Well, that could be something that still ends up in court.
Right.
Joe told her in the meeting between Loretta and Becky, as plain as anything, that she needed to file the proper papers and get everybody a copy, so.
Right. Well, but still, Joe gave her the right advice, but he doesn't have any authority to make her whatever. The Commission sitting here does have some authority to make sure the estates are administered according to the way the rules and the laws are set forth. So that's all I'm saying. If she's taken the money already, she needs to make sure things put in order. If she can't, then it may be an issue she may owe some money by. She hadn't done it proper, done what she should have done. She could have taken the money improperly, 5% or whatever.
Well, she told us that they told her here at the courthouse she had to take it.
Well.
And that I know is not true. But that was what she told the family.
I couldn't believe that. You know, you hear everything.
Right. That's true.
I believe that at this juncture, unless somebody can tell me something otherwise, that we need a motion to enter into what we have heard here this evening, that there's issues outstanding with the estate of James Junior Daniels, that one, the 5% due, for the 5% you're eligible to charge for being an administrator of the estate, has been levied and paid, according to the information we've been provided, without full closure of the estate. And the outstanding issue would be that there needs to be proper closure on the proper form, financial closure, and that the veterans' money, whether it be $600 or lower, needs to be officially requested or explanation given if it has already been received, show where that has been expended part of the estate. So I think that entertain a motion to send a letter, communicate this to Loretta, to you, and then copy it to everybody else, that this is a request that you made, and we want answers to that at the next meeting, and we'll see what happens.
I will offer that motion on the table.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, no problem.
I have been told by a lawyer that it can be voted on by your county, what amount, what percent they can take for hailing the estate, that it can go as low as 3%. And I just want to know if that's true.
It says up to 5%.
Up to 5%.
I believe is what it says.
But there's, can be other things come into play that they're not legal.
Could be. I wouldn't argue one way. We have never done it otherwise. We just, whatever people have charged, as long as it doesn't go on the 5%, that has never been challenged. I know. Of course, you know of any or not, but I don't know of any. But that's, that's the law says up to 5%. You don't have to take anything.
Right. Most, most people, most families don't take anything, to my understanding.
That happens. Happens the other way, too.
Right. Well, if it was done right, it would be different. But when the state's not done correctly, then there is a problem.
Well, that's what we'll try to help resolve that. Sometimes we make the effort and it doesn't work, and it gets to the point where we just say, well, if it needs to be pursued further, take it to certain court, and you do have that option, even whatever we may rule there. You have the option to do it. Where you choose, that's up to you guys.
Well, I would just like to get her dismissed so I can continue with the veterans, because, I mean, it's been a year since my father died.
Well, if there's money out there, it should be done.
Exactly.
We want to see it done, and whatever happens, happens. But it should be pursued if that's the case. So we'll find out according to what she says.
Okay.
Had a motion, I'll second that, being all yes vote, motion carries. And we'll try to have that scheduled for the next meeting. I'm not sure when that's going to be, because Judy's got some health issues. At the end of the meeting, we're going to talk about where we meet next time. I think we will, but we had a good assignment to pass. All right. But we'll notify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is Rick McDowell. Green, that's water, phase 3 or 4? Is it 1, 2, 3, 4?
I'm waiting on 5.
Well, we got a call today wanting to call.
We did have a call.
Hi, Rick.
I had some stuff for you guys, too.
Do we talk about this thing?
Yeah, we'll talk about it real quick. I'm giving this guy two.
First of all, Ryan, there's five papers, so we need one.
Oh, no problem.
Quick and simple, guys. I already gave one of these to Charles earlier. It's just
a basic map of the potential homes for phase four that we'd like to put the subject systems into. I think there's approximately 15 in all, and I've labeled them with little black squares there. And then the creeks next to them are tributaries that run into the left fork in the Mud River. And then the creeks next to them are tributaries that run into the left fork in the Mud River. Eventually, you'll see the big, huge black line on the bayous side. That's where, that's where the outline of the lake starts. And then the little magnets that I passed out. One of the issues that we're having right now is buildup of grease within the septic systems themselves. So hoping to combat that, I'm going to hand deliver these magnets. I actually designed these, I'm doing it for the first time, so we'll see how that works out. But, so not only will I hand deliver those to the people, I wanna kinda try to advise them on how to better take care of their systems and reinforce their roles as homeowners, homeowners of these septic systems, you know, their ability to take care of the water, not put grease in the grounds.
A good lesson.
Thank you.
We'll come back here and see how many people listen to it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It's an ongoing lesson.
Right, but it is a real deal.
Let me give you a quick update on some things. There are just some dates and some things that we're doing. We're still trying to move toward the next phase, which is only phase four. And we're also trying to solve some issues with concrete tanks. We're hoping by the end of this month to have looked at all the concrete tanks that went in in phase one. I'll talk a little more about that as we go through the stuff. The second page, we did a tributary sampling early in, in fact, it was the day of the last meeting or the day before the last meeting, something close to the last meeting. And if you go down to where the highlight is, Bar Camp, that's one of the places, which at one point was sort of our poster child, because we had seven systems in a row and we were getting real good readings. And the last time when we did a sampling in December, instead of being under two hundred, it was seventeen hundred and thirty, which was a concern. So what we did is we started doing inspections of each one of the homes. And we found that indeed at one of the homes, there was some infiltration with water. And we just got back some results from testing that specific home. We got a really high reading. So the thought is that the reason we've got a problem now, looks like a problem with Bar Camp, is because of one individual home. It's phase one home, it's a concrete tank. So I think.
Somebody thought that's what you.
Yeah, it's leading us back to that. So we gotta try to solve these concrete tank problems. The next sampling down, we've got a problem at Obed Clay's that I shared with you the last time. So rather than sampling for the tributary there at Obed's where we were sampling, we went up the creek, upstream of his house and did a sampling. And there, the sample results were two hundred and thirty. So before the sample, the sample results were thirty-five thousand. When we went up the creek a little bit, dropped down to two hundred and thirty. So I think until we get his problem solved, we're gonna sample above his house. The next two after Obed, I think it's pretty significant on Dogbone, where we have had the highest consistently bad readings. And we've managed to put in a whole lot of systems. We've got a reading this time of five hundred, so. Hopefully, we'll see that trend continue. And then down below that, which is after Dogbone empties into the left fork and continues on down, we have a reading of two hundred and fifty there. So that area, I think, I hope, we're gonna see some things clean up. The next couple pages are direct discharge samples, where we're sampling directly out of the systems that go in. We're trying to go back and re-sample phase one. And you'll see that the ones we did almost the last day of December, we had quite a few that were under ten, which is great. Three of those were on Bar Camp. That was when we were trying to figure out what the problem was. And that's when we found that the one home on Bar Camp had over twelve thousand. So the focus is now, how do we solve the problem then? Phase two, we finally got up to James Atkins, who lives on Wolf Branch. I can't get up there except walking, so it's always sort of an iffy kind of situation. It's a mile up and a mile back, and we've gotta get these samples, all the samples to the lab within four hours. So you have to walk pretty fast to get up there and back and sample the rest of the watershed. But he had a good reading. So pretty much as you look at phase two, we've got consistently, you know, it's way under two hundred. Often it's under, it's less than ten, so that's a real good sign. And the final page there is on page three, where again, most of the time, we've got pretty good readings. The third one down, the home, we had two that were over a thousand. The last time we were there visiting, working on it, one of the people in the home shared with us the fact that she's taken sixteen medications.
Fifteen different medications.
So all those medications, we know are having a negative effect on the ability of the septic system to take care of that. So we're trying to work with ANUA, the company that's making these P E T systems, to see what kind of suggestions they've got on what we can do. And then the final thing you've got is a list of all the tanks from phase one. You remember that the commission decided about three quarters of the way through that project, that we were gonna stop putting in concrete tanks. We switched to plastic tanks. The ones at the very bottom are plastic tanks, the other ones are concrete. Most of the concrete tanks are WGA Clark concrete tanks. So this thing is divided into Clark tanks and the non-Clark tanks. And the goal is to go around and actually check every single one of these tanks we felt like we needed, even though the ones we've checked, Clarks have been real bad. We think we need to check other people too, just so it doesn't seem like we're picking on one person. Excuse me?
I said, we checked tenants today.
Well, as far as we can tell. Yeah, so, yeah, we're in the process of doing that. And hopefully by the end of the month while we report on that, you'll see that there are a batch of these Clark tanks, we say, are leaking. It's either because when we check in there, right now we're taking, we're actually taking pictures, you can see water flowing in. Or the other problem we're finding is that inside of the tank, chunks have fallen off. So it's sort of decaying from the inside out. The other problem we've got is that a lot of these tanks are missing baffles. These are two-compartment tanks. And so the idea is the solids get trapped on one side of the tanks, and just the liquid goes to the other. And that's because there's this ninety-degree baffle. And the only way you can go from the solid side to the liquid side is go up and pass through the baffle, so the solids won't do it. We're finding some of these tanks don't have baffles. So that means that in the second side of the tank, you've got all the solid stuff, which again causes a lot of problems. So we're working on it. And we will have some kind of report. I'm not sure what we do after we get to report done. One of the things, we've sent some emails to Mr. Clark, letting him know we've got this problem, asking for what his suggestions might be. We haven't gotten any response.
Last two meetings, we don't have, the guy's not here this time. Two meetings, I believe in a row, we had a representative here from the Attorney General's office, from Consumer Protection. And I thought, well, maybe we should ask him to talk with you, but I haven't done that yet.
Well, remember, we went to the Consumer Protection Division where we tried to take care of the ashco problem. That was at the Kevin Farrell system. And in the end, it just, it was like, well, we told Ricky shouldn't have done that. You know, it was all this back and forth. He said, she said, it was almost like a probate hearing or something. It felt just, everybody was calling everybody names. I think our thought is that if this turns out as bad as we think it's gonna turn out, maybe we have a meeting and we ask ANUA to come in and be part of that meeting. So that they're there to think that they're gonna, they're gonna say, you know, these, the fact that these tanks are bad is destroying our P E T systems.
Yeah, somebody will have to blame somebody or, but it is. You guys weren't so, doing your job so well. I mean, most people who are here to put these systems in, they just put the dirt on you. They think they've worked for twenty years.
Yep, that's exactly right.
But you guys are showing, I mean, a good thing. It's a headache, but really, you know, all this money being spent, we should not get involved with them. Shouldn't we?
I think maybe in the, I think what we could see happen on a state level is the state makes a decision.
Well, you know, they're really worried and sorry about this.
So hopefully we'll get you some kind of a resolution on this, and we won't have too many more systems that go belly out. I mean, we just can't afford them anymore. I think, I think what we're finding is that we've had some systems where there have been grease. But where there's plastic tanks and grease, we haven't had problems. It's where there's grease and concrete tanks, where we got that combination. So like the perfect storm, because the concrete tanks are letting in all this extra liquid. And the system can't stand both the grease and overload of the liquid. But we'll see.
All right, we appreciate it.
Okay, we'll keep. And I guess the one thing to say is, as you look at that stuff, most of the systems are working. It's not, I feel like I'm always talking about the bad stuff. But there are a lot of systems that are good.
Well, yeah.
That are doing well, and they're just those few.
Do you test down at the camp?
Yes, we do test down at the camp.
CNN's good, there's good numbers down there, aren't we?
If you look at the very, I think it's the last page, no, the first page. First page, the very last one down, just can't believe.
Is that a concrete tank?
There's no tank there. There's portage eyes that get pumped.
Yeah, but that water flows down there too.
The water goes down, right.
So that was our concern, but we'll look at it very first night.
We looked at that in nine years, ten years. Sometimes we're testing, every month in the summer, we've had three high readings at the camp.
So they're trying to get Rick to assist.
Yeah.
And Rick, the, I answered a call today for Rick. It was the EPA out of the Philadelphia office, but that was goodness.
It was goodness. They are, I don't know how they're gonna, exactly what they're gonna do, but from the stimulus money, the A R R A money, they're gonna sort of talk about the project. A good use of federal money.
They're gonna give us more money?
They might not, but I think maybe the D E P, when they talk about the D E P too.
Can't hurt.
Can't hurt.
Probably just a way to buffer some of the anti-cancer people.
On sure. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Next thing on the agenda is Harts Community Center. We had a little bit of computer problems up there on Wednesday, but we got those worked out. It may end up that we may have to buy a new PC up there, but we just kinda maybe miss one along. So that may be something in the future.
That's something that I was talking to some of the workers about. Instead of investing in another desktop, a laptop, so that they could bring a computer back with them instead of putting it in the office.
Yeah, but they locked it up behind a lock, so.
I've been up there a few mornings when they've had to get everything out and set it up. It's a problem, no.
And on the center at Harts, I asked Judy today to see what it was costing us in utilities to operate both centers. The one at Harts, this is Furlsburg Utilities, from, I think it's from July through December. Is it eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
So.
We had budgeted ten thousand dollars in utilities.
So it's over eleven forty already. And I'll just go ahead, because we're corporal on here. We budgeted the same amount from the corporal, ten thousand. They have, according to these figures, expended, I guess, forty-five, ninety-four, four thousand. At half, so you guys are, the ten thousand looks like it's gonna carry the corporal. The other, it's a little bit big, maybe more use, I don't know. We do try to keep track of this stuff. And of course, looking at it too, if we move into a, another center, which we've talked with the school board about, we talked about the last meeting of the Harts Middle School building. We're concerned about utilities, because of what it's gonna take, but it's such a much bigger building. But just information, we just thought it would be a good time to share that.
Okay, now, Lawrence, you wanna give us any update on the corporal?
Well, we have a meeting tomorrow evening, and we wanna start off new with the community and if we can get a, heal feelings out and start all over.
Well, I think it's important that we work continually together and with a focus of what's good for the community and see what we can do to make it happen. I think it, moving to the advisory board, with the advisory board reporting basically to Judy, which is the commission for us, then we know what's going on, what you want, what you need. Doesn't mean we always give it, but we know what you need. But I think it's worth a try. We tried the other for a year, let's try this for a year, then we'll evaluate and see what we're reacting on we're doing. So that's what we're at, so. And I do have it down, we'll try to veto tomorrow evening. It'll be tight, but I'm gonna try.
Sharon, do you have anything to report on outreach?
Just that outreach is so good, and at Christmas, shoeboxes was a great success. Out of nine hundred, I believe we had nine hundred. We had thirty-two left. And we had a few people that was in need, and we gave some more to them. And then the rest of them, we just opened it up and made everybody have. And we got a sprang strange house today. We had to clean out a house. Tony and my brother Billy did. The man had a reenter, and she walked off and made a lot of stuff in the house and get kind of us to come and clean the house.
I hear that.
We got two truckloads and a carload out of it.
Don't tell me about it.
But we still need the truckloads, so long.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the county commission goals for two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, I had to pull it up here a little bit. Go ahead, Thomas, we'll talk about it in a minute.
We annually, we have goals that the county commission sets forth to really highlight so that we can keep focus on what's important for the county. Obviously, the most important thing that we always talk about is working to deliver clean, safe, public water to the people in Lincoln County. And my term here on the commission is fairly new, but I know that the previous commissions have worked tirelessly to make sure that people have access to abundant, clean water. And that's the number one item that Commission President McCann has listed. I'll let you go over the items, and if I have anything, I'll jump in.
Well, as he said, what we try to do every year, we, sometimes it's been February, but every year, first of the year, we do come up with goals for the ensuing year and review those and try to see what we can do to make them work. Just because you're goals doesn't mean you're going to do it. But I learned a long, long time ago that if you put something down in writing and call it a goal, you will work to achieve that, whether it be in business or be it personal, whatever it is. So it's very important to put goals down. And I think also it's a good way to communicate to those who may wonder, you know, what does the commission really do? What, how do they decide what they're gonna do? Well, these two and a half pages of goals are guiding blocks for us as we get ready to make a budget coming in March. The goals are very important to us as we look at the funds. Where are you gonna put the money? And once you do the personnel, then you decide, you know, if you're gonna support fire departments, if you're gonna support the crime watch, if you're gonna support four H, all those different things that requires, you know, decisions to be made and what amounts. So we feel that it helps us and we place these out and ask people for, to review them, give us some input. This year, we feel that the Hack Hill McCoy system, we have Mr. Burton here, one of our board members on that, is gonna be a goal that we've had and still a goal. board members on that, is gonna be a goal that we've had, and still a goal, we have down as goal three, to make sure that we stay focused and do what we can to bring about the Ivy Branch development of the Hatfield McCoy system, and that we're not sure at this juncture actually what type of wheels we'll have there, but we do believe that there'll be a trail system there by this time next year, and we're gonna work, make that happen, anything that we need to do based upon what Mr. Burton provides as far as what's going on at the trail, you know, meetings, and what do we need to do as a commission. At some juncture, I know I have been told, and of course, parish may wanna enlighten us on that, but at some juncture, the county commission, working with the Hatfield McCoy board, will have to make a decision as to where the trailhead will be and those kind of things. So we will have to make that decision in conjunction with the system, and to me, it's not one of those things that you think, well, do you do it and not make somebody mad? That's not the way you approach it. Your approach is, we're making investments in the county as far as tourism, and if the people who head up the Hatfield McCoy system recommend that you need to do this to make this thing work, well, in my opinion, they know more about it than I would, and I would lean to support their efforts as they get into this. We'll just have to see how it goes. Another thing that we do is, as we get into work, is to try to find out ways that we can touch as many people as we can. And in Lincoln County, the, of course, Mud River Dam is one of the things that's, it's important as far as we have the shooting range up there, we have the, the fishing tournament every spring, we think that's important. It doesn't take a whole lot of money, but it brings a lot of people, a lot of people sitting here, I know Dallas, a bunch of them helped put that on, and it just gives us an opportunity to do something. It helps a lot of people that we don't see here a lot of times at the commission meetings, but when you go up there to the fishing tournament, you see all these little guys catching those, sometimes even big fish, we did last year. So it's, it's just another thing that, that we think is important, as we see it. Somebody else may come and sit on the commission and see it completely different, but we think that the commission, if funds are available, that you should involve as many different people as you can in your county, let them be part of what's going on. It's their tax dollars, it's their county. We just have to be sitting here trying to help work with everybody. So we try to look at it that way, and it, a lot of these things are, you know, long and in-depth, but all of them's important. The food banks, they're important to certain people, it's important to us, it's important to our churches, important to people who are in need. So we look at that part of it, just trying to hit some of the highlights. One of the things that I think's gonna happen, we've had it down a couple of years as a goal, is to, anywhere in Lincoln County, we can get better sewage treatment, and we hear, we're gonna talk about the individual tanks, that's part of it, but a public sewer system is something quite different, and we've been looking in-depth for a couple of years, trying to see what we might be able to come up with at Allen Creek, but we think that's important for the development of that area and Long Quarter G, and the Public Service District there, with Mr. Gregory and those involved, Gary back there, they just, you know, have really picked it up a notch, I think, and, and working with South Charleston, have been able to get a little closer to making that happen, and I think by this time next year, I hope to be able to look at these goals and say, well, we're first base on getting public sewer in Allen Creek. But I think it's, it's not only a health issue that's important, but it's also an economic issue, it's, it will bring industry, bring work to that area, so we think that's very important. One of the things that, that number twenty-five, we'll talk about later a little bit, but we are, again, looking at healthy living, healthy lifestyle, thinking how that might make a difference, not only to people who work at the courthouse, but maybe we can do some good there, say to other people, here's what would help you as a person, which really helps the county if we can be more healthy. So that is something we'll be working on, hearing a little bit more about later. I did prepare a letter today to support one of the goals that we have, and that's goal twenty-six, and basically, working to get, or Governor Thomon, who Thomas talked about a while ago, of being, you know, a great, a great president of the state senate for a number of years, but also the first southern governor we really have from our region, and maybe, but the point I want to bring to his attention and work on diligently this year is to take the Mud River Dam and, and develop it into a full-fledged state park system with camping and recreation and things of that nature. So I'll put it to the letter today. I think Judy got it in the mail. We got it typed and I signed it, but with the idea that we can have more activities going in, just trying to make the point that Lincoln County, I think I put in the letter that, as I see it through my eyes, that it's a unique place. It's, it's a place, in my opinion, that has qualities that a lot of other places don't have. I mean, I like all of western Indiana, but I think Lincoln County is just a little bit better in some ways, and one of those things is, of course, situated. It's situated between Taze Valley, Charleston, Huntington, Barbersville area as far as their population, but we are still, I believe, cleaner, we've got more space, green space that we don't wanna really lose, I don't think, but we wanna utilize it. And we've got three rivers, not very many counties have three rivers, and we do have, and we need to utilize those and follow the work that's going on in the Little Coal River as far as cleaning things up and what's gonna happen on the Guyan River. So I just see that as us being part of that, not it, but part of it. So I think that's a, a thing that we'll, we'll work on, and the last one I'll mention, and Thomas can add in there, is goal twenty-eight, the last one. You know, we've had for a long time, worked with our school system, and basically, in the goal twenty-eight, that what is a, maybe a national effort, but I believe that, that very few of our school-aged kids know very much about how government works, whether it be the local government here, or their court system, or, you know, law, national system, the county commission. So I don't know what the, what we're gonna do yet, but the goal basically says, continue to work with the school system for the benefit of our students. During this year, seek to get school-aged children involved in county government at all levels. Now, I'd like to be able to see something that we could do to bring kids, you know, into the system, how they might be able to absorb, observe the court system, how they might be able to participate in a county commission, some of those kinds of things that, that they will learn from. And so maybe it's, you know, you think that, well, the county commission, you know, your job is to look after the funds of the county and those things, and, but I think it's bigger than that, because our kids are, are best deal we got, they're all we got, really. So we need to do whatever we can, I think, if we can assist and promote and do those things. It just, it just seems that maybe that should be a new goal, and we put that on there, and when we vote tonight, that will be one of the goals that we'll do, is pick that up and run with it. Mr. Brown?
I just echo everything you say, and the fact that I think it's important for us to really understand and embrace what our true natural resource is, the best natural resource we have, and that's our people and our kids. And I think that whether it be local, state, county, federal, whatever level of government, I think we have to work as hard as we can not to exploit our environment, exploit the people, and I believe that our goals reflect those beliefs and those desires to help the people in this county, and help this county move forward. And to go one step further with goal twenty-eight, the school system is nurturing the future leaders of this county and this state and this country, and I believe that this body and the school board, many, many times we miss the, miss the vote when it comes to helping to elevate those kids up to a level that they understand what's going on, they can be involved with government and be full partners in what happens to them and their communities. And I know the state board of education has a program, a mentor program, where a student sits as a board member, a non-voting member, but they're able to sit in that board meeting and, and discuss and deliberate and give their perspective to the items on the agenda. One of the things I would love for us to consider, I know that KK Matthews, the school board president, very interested in this idea, but from the local school board level and this level, to have a student member of the commission and the school board, so that we can talk to them about the agenda items, but not have one person for an entire year, maybe one person for so many meetings, and rotate two other students and work with the civics teacher to make that happen. That's just one of the ideas I would like to see us fulfill the next year.
Okay. With all that said, and it's still, even though we vote to adopt these tonight, if somebody in the public would have something that they certainly feel worthy of adding, bring it to our attention, and can be certainly done, if we just work together on it. So at this time, we entertain a motion to adopt the goals for two thousand and twelve.
So moved.
Second, and all yes vote, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the bills as planned for Penny Muth.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the generation orders submitted by Tracy Dempsey Sizer.
So moved.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to set the dates for the Lincoln County Commission to set as the Board of Review and释明for following dates. Wednesday, February the first, two thousand and twelve, from nine to four thirty. Friday, February the third, two thousand and twelve, from nine to four thirty. Monday, February the sixth, two thousand and twelve, from nine to four thirty. Wednesday, February the eighth, two thousand and twelve, from nine to four thirty. Friday, February the tenth, two thousand and twelve, from nine to four thirty. Tuesday, February the fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, from one to four thirty. Tuesday, February the twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, from nine to four thirty will be mineral day. And we may have to add a couple more days on there for mineral, but as of right now, those are the dates.
Oh, we'll be left up in there.
Uh, before I do a second on it, just for the public and for everyone, this is a requirement setting code that the county commission has a responsibility to the people who are out here paying taxes, to give them the opportunity to question whether the tax is fair and what it should be, maybe not what you agree to, but, but it's, if it's fair to everybody according to what the code says. So the purpose of these meetings is for, to notify the public, and this will go into the paper, that we will be doing this, and you need to call and get an appointment and say, I need to talk about my house, or my piece of property, or my farm, whatever it may be. That way, when you come, that someone will be in the meeting to talk about that, to explain how they reached a value of your house, or your mineral, whatever. So as Judy said, the, the last meeting of the twenty-first is for minerals, and we always have required to have somebody from the state here, state tax office, to, who understands the minerals and explains it, and goes about the process of how they reach a value on it. Sometimes we don't even agree with them on it, but it's the whole process that we have to work through. But it's important, I think, that, that people have this opportunity, and certainly, we've seen cases where just by oversight mistakes, that things have happened. And so we take the position as county commissioners that if it is fair and equitable, the tax to be paid, but don't ever let some individual taxpayer be stuck with more than they should. We, we just go against the state several times we have, because they just want to say, well, this coal mineral, it'll be mine maybe in thirty or forty years from now, and it's worth so many dollars. Well, doesn't mean we have to agree with it, because we know where it's so isolated, or something, we may know about it, not just out of the blue, but based upon information we would have by being local, then we just have to say sometimes, well, we don't agree with that, we're not willing to accept it, we'll go back with a different, a less costly way of doing it. So it happens, and it's important for people to bring it to our attention, so. Second to motion, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to set the findings of fact and conclusions of law and recommended decision of Linda Wickman as fiduciary commissioner for the estate of Sonny Joe Harvey, and dismiss the claims against this estate as filed with Sonny R. Harvey.
So moved.
Second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept the report of C. Joe Stevens as fiduciary commissioner for the estate of James Junior Dennis.
So moved.
Second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to reappoint Guy Brannion as a member of the Hamon Public Service District Board of Directors, term being January the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, to January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second, all yes, motion carries.
Need a motion to set a public hearing on January the twelfth, two thousand and twelve, at six P.M. for the precinct changes for the upcoming primary election to be held in May of two thousand and twelve.
Before I make the motion, I would like to explain one thing, especially to the media, 'cause I don't see anyone here from the area that's impacted. Some of the precinct lines that had been adhered to in the past were not exactly where we thought, or where they should have been. For example, Little Harts Road, I live on the left side of Little Harts Road, always we thought all of Little Harts Road voted at Little Harts Precinct. Little Harts Road actually is the precinct line, so the left side of the road where I live is Little Harts, the right side is, is Ranger, and that is nothing that was done during the redistricting, that's actually been the longstanding precinct line since the eighties. And we looked at trying to resolve the problem, which you have to go by census blocks in order to move voters into precincts. The only way to move both sides of Little Harts back into the Harts District, which I can assure you I wanted to see happen, was we would have to go all the way to Route Thirty-Seven, which is in Ranger, and move that entire census block to Harts, which would impact many more people that live on Thirty-Seven in that particular area than that, than that's impacted on Little Harts. So I would like for, if possible, you to, the Lincoln Journal, to get some maps and, and understand that there's probably gonna be some people quite upset, including all the people that I can look at across the room, and say, so I would like for them to understand that that is nothing that was done from the redistricting. The maps are available from nineteen eighty-two to eighty-four, whenever the changes were made at that point, and then you can compare those to the maps that we approved recently for redistricting. The precincts in that particular area were not touched in any way. So we are just, we're, we're looking at adhering to the law, making sure that those lines are respected in what the commission did in the eighties.
Why, why would they be upset if it's not?
Because what, what's going to happen now, the people on the right side of the road as you drive up to Little Harts to Harvey Fork, will now have to drive to Ranger Elementary School to vote, and they will be passing up Aidenville School where they had always voted in the past.
Okay, gotcha.
They should have been voting there in the past anyway.
And Aidenville School itself actually has sat in since the eighties in Ranger precinct.
Yeah, it's really a.
But it was believed that Fourteen Mile Mountain was the precinct line, which was not the case, but what, one of the reasons we decided not to, to make that census block change and move the Thirty-Seven voters to Harts, we believe the voters on Little Harts and the Harts area will be taken care of because of the early voting precinct that's going to be in Harts. If they don't want to drive to Ranger, they can vote at the new precinct that's going to be made available to them, but still, some people will not understand.
And we discussed this in length the other, we had a work session, we'll talk about it in the report here in a minute, but with Jovan last week, and trying to look at several places in the county where issues would come up like this, and that was the most strange one, but there's no way we can work around it, and it felt like that by her bringing it to our attention, it was good, because I hadn't realized it until we went to looking at it and trying to figure out what we need to do, and, of course, she's gonna be here on the twelfth hearing in case anyone wants to come in and talk to her and look at the maps and let her show where these boundaries are and where they should be, so.
Well, and to, to go one step further, the county clerk's office, Donald Whitton, Kristy Scrags, they, they sat down with the maps, and Kristy worked with Jovan and looked at every option possible to fix that particular problem, thinking most of the other problems were fixed.
We were able to fix several, yes.
So I do appreciate the work the county clerk's office did in resolving this, but again, that's not something that Mr. Whitton or his office and staff had contributed to, because that was implemented prior to his being elected to his position. But now that we know that that's the line, we can't just ignore the fact that's the line, we have to follow the law, so we're trying to make sure that those people are taken care of, and I think they will be with your own vote. This time, I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second, all yes, motion carries, public hearing, January the twelfth.
I need a motion to approve a contract by in between the West Virginia Development Office and the Lincoln County Commission for the Lincoln County opportunity to give me the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and give Charles S. McCann prison authorization to sign this stated contract.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Second, all yes, motion carries.
What will that be used for?
I think it was computers, upgrades, things like that.
In fact, I thought it right here, and it's to purchase computers, software, and related components for the Lincoln County opportunity. I need a motion to approve the appointment that's done in vacation of Lincoln County Commission by Donald C. Whitten, clerk.
So moved.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
Okay, the next, healthy initiative, smoke-free environment weight loss contest. I just have to get things.
This is a big one, and it's important. We have been contacted to move on, I guess, to get a little more involved with the initiative we started, of course, it's an initiative countrywide and statewide, of trying to be maybe more healthy. But let me just read here a thing that was sent to us, and asking each of us to participate as counties, and it's really a resolution. It says, "Whereas the citizens of Lincoln County are vitally important to our community, and whereas the goal of this day is to support the announcement and the subsequent implementation of active West Virginia 2015 West Virginia Physical Activity Plan, and whereas increased physical activity can improve the mental and physical well-being of those in our area and the quality of life in our state, and whereas a population engaged in physically active lifestyle can help to combat the epidemic levels of obesity and chronic diseases among state and local residents, and whereas all sectors of our communities must cooperate to support activities necessary to increase physical activity, including healthcare, public health education, business and industry, mass media, parks recreation, fitness and sports, transportation, volunteers, and nonprofits, and whereas all those who live, work, or play in West Virginia can be part of an increasing physical activity by supporting physical activity at school, in the community, and within families. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lincoln County Commission to Lincoln County that they, on January the nineteenth, 2012, be noted as West Virginia Physical Activity Day." And the title is, "Be Wild, Be Wonderful, and Be Active." Now, I don't think I had probably, I wouldn't sure how wild it could be. But anyway, with that, that coincides with, well, another issue we had here, but we do have a motion to adopt this resolution before us, and if we can do that, then I have a couple of things I want to speak to about this health issue.
So moved.
Second, all yes, motion carries to adopt the resolution. One of the things that, as we approach a new time in our year, is something that's not new, it's been discussed before, it's been beat up, it's been praised, and all kinds of things, but I think it's probably time, maybe past time, for the commission to take the lead in a endeavor that I think is needed, and that we may be able to help somebody by doing it. But this would be to adopt a regulation whereby we request, I'm not sure we can force, but we request publicly, that all elected officials take a drug test on a regular basis by someone that does this, and at the same time, that we request them to have all their employees on a random basis submit to drug testing. And we just think that would be a statement that may help somebody. We can just say one person, it would be worth it. And so with that, we have other issues, but I felt like that was the most important part as we moved into this healthy living, healthy lifestyle type thing. And the other part is certainly the physical activity, we're again going to partner with Lincoln Primary Care in trying to make their services available for people who work here to go out and be able to walk the track, be able to do the activities and things like that, so we want that to be part of this. Also, a contest that we're going, I guess, kick off on the nineteenth, we're going to look at the bottom floor, I think we talked about it last time, and the top floor, and have some type of friendly contest about weight loss. And we don't know how we're going to do that yet, but we're going to let the people decide that. And, but there will be rewards, and what I told Judy the other day, if we get ready to do this, maybe we need to think of short-term, you know, I don't know how often that is, six weeks, sometime, but we have some, saying, "Here we are, here's a little bit of something, you know, to reward you, because we work better that way." But we just need to come up with how we're going to, but we're going to work on that part of it, on weight loss, about, in addition to the activity. And of course, also, I believe, and it's a personal belief, of course, I've done a lot of research on it too, but that we need to encourage people to think about what they drink. And I believe, and all I can find is, that lots of things are good, but only one thing is really good for your system, and that's water. So we need to encourage people to lay down the soft drinks and drink the water, because it's just so good for us. We're a, you know, we're a machine, so we have to, I was hoping Dr. Bainsby here tonight, because he could tell us more about than I can, about the values of physical activity, the values of having, what goes in us is what we are, and so we need to be able to keep that machine running, and when you get as old as I am, and another guy in this room, I won't say who, but Donald C. Toppin, now, there's another guy seventy in here sitting there, and he's just a little old, right? But, but anyway, I think at some point in life, all of us think, "Well, you got to take an inventory." And what I have before me here now, I'll share with you. And this was a article, I do read the Gazette sometimes, from Kate Long did in the Sunday Gazette, and just, I seen the name, and of course, I know the person, she just retired from teaching in the school systems, Connie Dooley of Samarico. Says, "Connie Dooley of Samarico can easily climb the hill behind her house this year. Last year, it was much more difficult." Said, "I've added years on to my life. When Connie Dooley, who is sixty, climbed the hill behind her family house, she passes through her family cemetery and scrambles to the top of the hill, where as a girl, she ate apples in the family orchard, thinking, looking out over Lincoln County. My grandfather worked to pay off this place," she said. "Last week, he brought it to, with his labor. I want to live a long, healthy life right here." She said, "When I retired, I decided I had to do something without my weight," and it's hard for her to admit that. It says, "A year ago, knowing her family history of diabetes, the retired Lincoln County teacher got a blood test that it helped fair." This is a quote, says, "I looked at that paper with my high cholesterol, weight, and blood pressure numbers, and it hit me that I was killing myself, putting myself at risk. It hit me that I have a choice about that. I thought, 'I'm smarter than this, aren't I? I don't have to be this way.'" She started walking every day, exercising with friends, she joined the Weight Watchers, and I quote again, "I stopped eating without thinking. I didn't do anything expensive or complicated, I just made up my mind and stuck to it." And that's really the issue at hand, is it's all in our control, and there's other things in it, but I did call Connie to make sure it was all right for me to tell how old she was, and those kinds of, and, but it's all in here, and it's just a matter of saying, "I'm stronger than whatever it is that tells you to do the other things." And you got to be able to do that, and I, again, always can't let a bee go by without talking about the seriousness of the health issue of smoking. It is the most dangerous, most killing thing there is. And, and again, it's easier said than done, but when you never smoked like myself, it's easy said and done. But it didn't mean I didn't try smoking at some point in time in life, but I couldn't afford it, so I don't guess I ever got to have it, so, but it's one of the worst things that could be, and of course, I get almost thrown out of the house sometimes with my family around, because I'd step on somebody's toes or something, but, you know, my concern is about fellow man, and if we can do something to help one person, two people, then we should do that, we shouldn't ignore it, if we can help. And sometimes helping people, they don't know that you're trying to help them, but that's all I see is us as commissioners, is we think about our people who we depend on to do the jobs in these various offices here, they need to be as healthy as they can be, to do the job, to be able to enjoy the money that they make once they've done their job. So I think it's our responsibility to do what we may, to help guide people in that direction, and working with churches and other groups to do the same type thing, and that's what we have set forth, and I know Rick has been very instrumental in trying to get some things done at the high school, and I read an article, I think it was this week or last week, about the new initiative on teen pregnancies and things, and all those things are so important, somebody has to help get it done. And I appreciate the job that Rick does, and other people who step up and do those things. A lot said, but it's important.
Maybe since Sean has lost so much weight, he could be our leader.
Mascot.
Mascot.
Example. Tell us about Sean.
Huh? You know the story. It's just a matter of changing, changing your mindset, really, and after two or three months, it becomes, it becomes part of you. It's, you know, it's just changing your routine, and it's a struggle to begin with, but literally after eight, nine weeks, it just becomes part of your everyday routine. And that's, and that applies to whatever technique, whether you're counting calories, or doing the Weight Watchers, or going to Zoom, but as long as you're sticking to it and making it part of who you are, after eight or nine weeks, it's routine, yeah.
It's like brushing your teeth.
Yeah, it really is, flossing even, you know?
Do you care to share how much weight you lost?
Lost a hundred pounds in twelve months.
It doesn't happen without trying, though, without setting the goals, I do believe that. My wife calls me, because I get up early in the night at the house, and I, but for the whole purpose, that's my time. I get up and get on the treadmill, and do my thing, and get it done. And the time they get up, they, they're mad because you did it and they didn't. But it's the only way you can do it, you got to figure out what works for you and do it, but it's worth doing.
Rick, if you don't care, I'd like to maybe work with you and Sean and Patty or something to get some articles in the papers, so that you all can help us, because we really do want to make this a big blast here at the courthouse, big kickoff on our weight loss contest, and all this being, promoting healthy living.
In fact, crime watch people want to do it as a group, and get involved, that they might be able to, we figure out some way to give you an incentive to do that.
I could probably stand to lose at least fifty pounds.
Well, now, you could be part of First Full, because you are with the Sheriff's Department.
But we do have some things planned as far as rewards and things that we want to try that, if it helps. I see. Did we get that adopted, Doc?
Yes, you did.
All right.
So we ready to go to the next one?
Yes.
I need a motion to appoint Joetta L. Cook as a mistress of the estate of M.J. Carrier for the sole purpose to settle an asbestos case.
So moved.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Gary Limble as deputy sheriff effective January the first, 2012, with an annual salary of $23,000, as requested by Jerry Bowlin, Sheriff.
So moved.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
Is that replacing someone, or?
No, he was being hired, but however, he did bring me a letter today, and I told him it was too late to get on the agenda, but we did have a deputy that resigned, so, because he had to help his father, so anyways, that will be on the next agenda. I need a motion to approve a donation to the Lincoln County All-Stars basketball team in the amount of $1,000.
So moved.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the employment of Shontae Watson as a part-time secretary, effective one. It's got eleven-twelve, but I think it's supposed to be one-one, but I will call Allen Holder, try to get ahold of him, so that effective date may be changed, at a rate of pay of $9.50 per hour, as requested by Allen Holder, Director.
So moved.
Second, and all yes, motion carries.
Is there anyone in the audience that was not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Gary?
Yeah.
I do have a suggestion, but I want it with your health.
Yeah.
I helped a young man a while, a few months ago, he had a drug problem, he's trying to get counseling. I couldn't find nothing in the county, it was through Charleston or Huntington, just a thought, maybe the Parks Community Center, the Forest Community Center, maybe try to get some kind of drug program in there, or with the court system, or if somebody is...
Counseling types, eh?
Yeah, I was calling the other day, contacting them, about E&amp;A coming in there three days a week, but I don't know, we haven't even, I can't never burden them to work.
You know, it's very disappointing of our state legislators, they haven't addressed this problem, because even in Huntington or Charleston, there's programs that take care of people for forty-eight hours, number of hours, and someone that has a serious problem, that doesn't take care of the problem. It's a disease.
And the younger generations, that one, I mean.
It is.
I honestly think we're going to lose a whole generation if we don't do something.
Maybe already lost a bunch.
And then the families that are dealing with it, they do not know where to turn.
I went to two funerals last month, thirty-four year old and thirty-seven year old.
I'll tell you, Judge Thompson, the judge at actually Boone County, but he serves this circuit too, is a true believer in what you say. He believes in the drug court system, trying to get kids into that, trying to get them rehab, trying to get them to get some type of diplomas, try to get them back on their feet, good work, but they've had two graduations now, and the last one's better than the first, so hopefully, that's one little piece of it. But with that, I did about, maybe two weeks ago, talk to Bob Hanson, who is over at Prestere Center, and he is interested in doing more in this area. He said he has something, he's trying to really get started, he said in Boone, I wasn't aware of it, but he said he would, you know, look at it, he was interested in doing more in Lincoln, of course, they have a place at this, a Prestere Center at West Ham, but what I asked him to look at is, if we got into this situation at the Hearts Center of trying to expand out there, would he be interested in doing something bigger out there in that area? So he's going to look at it and see, of course, he said, "Come down to, if I can find the money, be glad to do it," because the need is there, no doubt.
Well, I'm just thinking maybe, I may be wrong, but back in maybe like the day reporting sound of the court, sometimes as part of your punishment, you have to go to a program, and a lot of people don't have a lot of those, you know, that hasn't been offered.
Well, if they're in this, if they do benefit in the system, they do get to, I mean, it's those people who aren't got called, or whatever, but, but part of our program is, we do have the drug court that we put money into, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars or something. Help bring it about.
A quick question. Hypothetically, if a board of education member or a commissioner were to step aside in the coming weeks, would the district rules regarding two board members in the same district, or commissioner from the same district, would they apply to the old six districts, or the new three districts?
I would say the new.
Okay.
We discussed that, we haven't officially got an opinion on it, but that same thing, Kurt, I wonder, do you imply the, the May eighth election, is the new three districts, or do you, people to replace you, them serve out there, turns to two-twelve?
Because, based on the law, the way I interpret it, when we adopted those redistricting plans, from that point on, that was the law. So to, the way I interpret it, if someone would be in the position, and there would be, say, three board members in one district, and one of those would leave, then you would not be able to put someone back in that district, because at that point, it would be under the new rules.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm going to call the Secretary of State's office to be sure.
And we did, somebody asked, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, it wasn't sheriff, that's the conclusion that we came to.
It may not arise, I just speculate.
If you know about it, probably will.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission at this time?
I had a lady from the big ugly community center, I haven't met her, but I think her name is Ann Sinso.
Oh, that was me. Hi, Erin Finso.
We knew they had a new body over there.
She called me, and she wanted some of the people from our crime watch unit to come this Saturday evening at six p.m., and they wanted to set up a crime watch. this Saturday evening at six P.M., and they wanted to set up a crime watch in that area over there. So I talked to Rick Saul and Lawrence, and we just went up to go over there Saturday evening, and she said they would have food.
This ain't gonna bring you. Why don't you, would you like to stand and introduce yourself? Because I'd like to, you know, see who you are, but we heard about you the other day.
I'm gonna turn red. I am Erin Sensel, I am with the Big Ugly Community Center, or I'm in Big Ugly, I'm not actually working for the community center, for a year, starting in June, I have a fellowship that brought me out here. So I'm working with a bunch of community members to try and identify what Big Ugly residents want to see happen in Big Ugly, and see what we can do about it. So one of the things that we have been really interested in is increasing security, which is why I contacted you. But that's also why I'm here. A lot of the efforts that I've seen commissioners' names in the newspapers associated with, we are interested in, so.
Well, we just found out, I forgot her name, Liz Lea, Ann just left, she said, we got a new person coming, and she told us the name, but I've forgotten.
I don't know how she knew I was coming.
I don't know, somebody last week.
Well, she was the Vista worker there in Big Ugly.
Oh, okay.
And she just did an exit process, and she's, somebody said, I think this is, maybe Michael or someone, I don't know.
Well, Big Ugly, the thing that's happening on Saturday is what we're calling a chat and chew, it's based on what the Create Huntington group is doing, and we invite all community members to come out and have dinner, we provide that, and talk about whatever issues. So this next one is gonna be more focused on security, but we would love for commissioners to come out, we have a lot of questions.
And when is this?
This one is this Saturday at six, at the Big Ugly Community Center.
Thomas is over, I'd be glad to send you.
But they vary, just based on schedules, normally on Saturdays.
Yeah. What about Dave Lucas, have you talked to him about the crime watch at Harts?
I haven't.
Well, that's really, they have a crime watch across their Harts, but it's not very, I don't know, probably ten people, not very many people in it, but Dave Lucas is the person in charge. But I was out there the other day, and they're still going, but that might be somebody may want to assist also.
Yeah, and I received your email, I received Michael's email, actually, the day that Ann stopped in to tell us goodbye, I tried to call you back that evening, or that day, someone answered the phone and said, you can call, but I would love to work with you guys, anything I can do to help, I will.
Actually, it might be better for them to work with Harts, because it's a lot closer than...
Well, we heard that your model was the one that we might wanna base ours.
We figured that's what they had. Why not work with both of them?
Yes.
But it has proven to work, they have done lots of good, and we do support that in the commission, trying to assist in ways that help Harts, by helping buy in signs and getting some grants, helping with the gasoline and petroleum, so those things. Mr. Clay, well, and those that come will certainly, Lawrence will certainly explain all that, and invite you to their meeting, matter of fact, they have a meeting tomorrow at six o'clock.
Community Center.
That's the Community Center.
They're not meeting, crime watch, not meeting, okay.
Fourth Monday.
Yeah.
Are to have groundbreaking for that trail system in late spring of this year, or early summer, and to have the trail actually open and operating by the fall. And all the monies that provide and pays for that comes from the Hatfield McCoy Trail System, so they'll be paying about two hundred thousand dollars to build a trail system, and about another hundred thousand dollars to build a trailhead, and the trailhead will include restering facilities and a facility to purchase permits to ride the trail, and they will be hiring staffing to staff the trailhead locations for the restering facilities as far as janitorial and supply, and having someone on site there during the operating hours to allow people that don't have a permit to ride the trail to purchase those permits. And we've also set our committees for the Hatfield McCoy Trail System for the next year, and I've been blessed to serve on the field operations committee this past year. I chose to remain on that this year, because I told them, that's where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. Kenny Ray Atkins, our other board member, will continue to serve on the marketing committee. And we will be, between now and then, the commissioners and myself, we're gonna go over in that area and look and try to find out where to put a trailhead, because as Mr. McCann said earlier, that is the key to having a successful trail. And we're also looking into changing our legislative rules for our board, we need, and it takes about a year, but we're looking into building a four-by-four off-road system over there also, for the Jeeps and vehicles of that type, which would not be in the, were the ATVs, but it would be in a different section of that. And they're real excited, because there is none in West Virginia, and Hatfield McCoy has never built one, and hopefully, we're gonna get the first one, and they're real excited about that. So we're working on that, and we just want to let you know that we're continuing to work also to get a trail system in the other end of the county, in the Hart Creek area, and it will be in the Big Ugly area. So we're moving forward with that, and we just think this county has a lot to offer, and the Hatfield McCoy Board of Directors, we're blessed to have a state senator on our board now, Art Kirkendall, and our experience very supportive of us. And Jeff Lusk, who is the executive director, is very excited about our trail system that we're willing to have in the Ivy Branch area, because he is working to obtain funding through the highways or somewhere, or even he's looking at trying to get some coal company to build us a small bridge across the little Coal River that would connect the two trails to where the campgrounds are over there now, because there's access underneath the quarter to the trail system that's already there. And he just feels that we can have the most unique trail system to date on the Hatfield McCoy Trail System, and so we're pressing and moving, and we just want to thank everybody for allowing us to represent.
Thank you, Grace, you've done a super job for us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commission concerned?
Have we had any communication from Commissioner Vance?
Not having much. I haven't spoken with Commissioner Vance, he hasn't called into the office or anything since our last meeting.
It's kind of bad to give my report this month, because it's a little bit heavy with Christmas parties, but...
So you didn't gain any weight?
On December the sixteenth, I attended the Governor's Christmas Party at the Governor's Mansion, and this makes six or seven I went to in a row, but I usually decide to go to those, because I think it's a good place to network with other state and county leaders. At a particular Christmas party, those in attendance were myself, the Commission President, Dennis Lawson, who is over the Department of Highways here in Lincoln County, the Sheriff, and a business owner here in Lincoln County, Sam Watson. It's always good to just network, like I said, and talk to people about their concerns, and see what else is going on in other counties, so we can try to be ahead of the curve. On the seventeenth, I attended another Christmas Party at the Tri-State Race Track and Gaming Center.
That was very nice, Alvin.
Yeah, that was an invitation from Gary McAllister, from the Carpenters Union, and was a very enjoyable day, because it was, well, evening, it was a chance to mingle and talk to people that are involved with a union that works for living wages and affordable health care, and just striving to demand that an equal pay for a hard day's work, and was glad to be there. And again, that was with Judy, Mr. Hillbilly, and the Commission President. On the nineteenth, I went to the Forte Community Center to another Christmas Party. I'm glad you invited these guys, because they invited me to the Christmas Party, they know how to throw a good Christmas Party, but the East Lincoln Crime Watch, and it was a very good crowd. It's always good to be able to break bread with people that are out volunteering and doing what they can to sacrifice for their neighbors. On the morning of the twenty-first, I went to the, as a member, to the Corter G Regional Development Authority Meeting, and at the meeting, there were several people, and usually, we have a hard time getting a quorum, but for this particular meeting, it was a Chief Logan Conference Center, and we had breakfast provided, so we had a very full room, and I told the director, Tommy Atkins, that it seems that we should offer food more often, because the members show up. One of those in attendance was our new state senator, Art Kirkendall, who's a part of that board, and anytime you're able to sit down and talk about the issues that face the people in this county with your state senator, in a real intimate setting like that, it pays off for the people. On the twenty-ninth, I attended a meeting here at the courthouse with Will Wesley of E-SNS, and E-SNS is the company that we buy the electronic voting machines and e-poll books from. And as you remember, in the past, leading up to the last election, we had some serious problems with the e-poll books, because E-SNS was competing with the Secretary of State's Office, and the Secretary of State's Office was trying to design their own e-poll books, so it was a hassle for us to be able to get the data uploaded, to be able to use the books during the last election. Secretary of State's Office, I believe, has, they've abandoned the venture to develop their own e-poll books, and E-SNS has decided that since they abandoned that idea, they would like for us to look at changing our machines to a smaller, more lightweight machine that is easier to upload the information. So we were able to sit down with him, and Christie Skraggs was a part of that meeting. Well, Christie Skraggs informed us about the information before the meeting, but the county clerk was at the meeting. Also, Christie Skraggs presented the voters' registration list policy to the commission, and that's something that was required for all county clerks to sign, our county clerk has signed that, so we are in compliance with state law. January the fourth, I attended the open house for the new pre-K eight at Harts, it was well-attended. I still had a lot of concern in regards to the parking, I hope that the local board immediately takes action to address the problem. I had people come up to me during the open house and talk about having to park at the church and the old Heartland Hall Road, and there's no lighting in that area, and they have to walk down the road to get to the school, so they were really concerned that that's an accident just waiting to happen. So I did talk to the superintendent at the open house, and told her some of the concerns, and the fire chief and some others were at the open house, they had concerns about an exit strategy, and the windows in the school, and some other minor concerns they had, and she sat down and listened to them, and I believe that now that the fire chief and the superintendent, and during the conversation, realized they were related through marriage, I think they'll be able to work on the issue and resolve those problems. It was a little disheartening, though, being at the school, because being able to walk around the school and talk to the teachers, I was able to talk to several teachers that were riffed, and some of the teachers, including counselors, were telling me about the riffs due to the cuts from the federal government, Title I, Title II, and due to the bickering in Washington, and people that I believe just hate government, and they don't understand that some of these programs, government spending, they help the people that are most vulnerable. And now, as a result of the bickering and the nonsense in Washington, we're losing some good teachers and good counselors in Lincoln County. And all I can say is, to those people that are playing a role in that, shame on you, because now our kids and our communities, water, sewer, the infrastructure that we depend upon, is heavily being negatively impacted because of just partisan nonsense politics. And the last thing, Trina Baird, who's a dear friend, had gotten in touch with me, because she wants the county commission to consider giving money, or more money, to the Relay for Life in Lincoln County, and I told her that we would work on that, and I'm sure that we can help, and I'm gonna participate and walk in that as well, so.
Patty has asked this too.
I'm actually walking on Patty's team. That's my contribution so far to a healthy living, that's all I have.
Couple items, looking ahead, those pick up on relift off, is we've asked the PSDs, we'll be putting more money into have water line extensions, and Lincoln PSD has submitted four projects, and we will be trying to give it Mike here soon, and working with him and Gary and the board, trying to figure out which ones we're gonna start on and work on, and get that going. Also, I see some information from the Foster Grandparents Program, basically saying, you know, it's a good program, we've got a couple people work in Lincoln County, but we'd like you to consider helping us financially. And the other is, trying to put this plan together to get the Mud River Dam turned into a state park at the next meeting, hopefully to address the issue, considering a consultant agreement with Ron Gregory to help us bring it about. On the behind-the-scenes, I didn't put on there that I attended the Governor's Ball, because I wasn't sure whether that was appropriate or not, but I was there. Seventeenth, I read this, forgot. Seventeenth of December, I attended the Carpenters Union Dinner, Gary inviting us too, and I came home with as much money as I went there with for the hidden plane and the machines.
He won a door prize.
I won a door prize.
And he give it to me.
Twenty-five dollars or two, because I said Merry Christmas. The nineteenth, I did attend the East Lincoln County Crime Watch, and got to draw out the winning prize, and I tried to find my name, but just couldn't do it, but now sold some tickets, but I couldn't find, but I think it was a great meeting, and just a good time to get together, and I don't know how many people, probably fifty there, maybe more, I don't know, a good crowd, though. And I've seen somebody put art on the paper, I think I probably know who did that, but she's pretty good at that. Also, being a member of the Lincoln EMS Board, on December the twentieth, I attended the board of directors meeting, and we were able to employ several people at various positions. Seems like we get staff, we're out of staff, but right now, we're doing pretty well out there. December twenty-first, with others, Donald, his staff, Judy and Thomas, we did meet with Joe Vaughn for four, five hours, to talk about the precincts and what need to be done, and how we might get into there. December twenty-third, met with some group of people to further discuss how we might be able to expand the space at the courthouse by purchasing a building next door. We did, again, this evening, take another walk through that, we haven't reached any decisions yet, we're still looking and searching. December the twenty-ninth, basically reviewed, discussed with company representatives, Tom talked about, with the electronic poll books, I did more listening and learning than anything. Thomas, Donald, his staff, Judy, they seem to me like they knew a lot about it, I just sat there and listened and learned, I think, but it was, it's interesting, and of course, it's going to cost a little bit of money, and that's the part that always gets my attention, but I feel like it is the thing to do, if they prove to be useful, as we go out and do these early voting in three different places, it's gonna be essential to be able to do that, in order to keep track of things. This week, January the third, did attend the Farmland Protection Board meeting along with Rick. We're basically are moving forward, and we learn about this much, and then we find out we should have learned about that much, it seems like there's more and more and more to learn, but it is a sound program, it makes sense. We've been debating on whether we need more insurance, as far as protecting board members, called Guard Devil Public Money. I don't think we do, but we'll talk about that at the meeting. I did make a phone call and talked to a long time, the insurance representative, but I don't know. But anyway, seems like it, that we are moving forward, I think that Lincoln County has a lot to offer, you just have to decide what you want and shop for it, but Lincoln County is certainly a good place to live, work, and enjoy life. So with that, I'll close my remarks. We will try to meet the next time.
Okay. As you stated, that we need to figure out about the January the ninth tag.
Well, I think Judy won't be here, she's got some, I think... Well, I think Judy won't be here, she's got some, I think, pretty serious surgery that's going to take place Monday, and I don't want her to, you know, get big head or anything, but I think it's going to be difficult for Thomas and I to carry on without her help. So we've got to figure out a game plan, and I think, I heard Thomas said, well, I'll go, he'll try and come in some next week, and I certainly will. Wanda, our custodian, she helps out a lot, she's able to step up and help some. I'm sure that with all the people around, we can probably get some things done, but we'll never be able to do it as good as Judy does, but we'll work at it, and try to keep the fire going until she gets back. I told her she could have at least five days. Fifth lumbar burberry, I believe that she's going to have some work done on, so I feel for her, really. It's pretty serious stuff. But I think we probably should try to have our meeting, and it probably will be a light agenda if I have to tie it. So we'll just adjourn till the nineteenth and the ten o'clock.
So moved.
Second, we stand adjourned at seven fifty-five. Thank you all for attending.